I'm calling to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, March 2nd, 2020. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Hawkeisler.
Here.
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mayor Halliday.
Present.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
Mr. Riden.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Thank you. Could we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Menon?
We open our school committee meeting with a period of public comment. We would ask that you... is it a sign-in sheet over there?
Yes.
If you have some public comments you would like to make to the school committee, we would ask you to come up to the microphone to sign in so that we can capture your name and address for our minutes. I would ask you to try to keep it within about two or three minutes. And it is also a period of comment that we don't usually engage, but we're taking lots of notes and we'll follow up on a lot of the things that we hear. Is there anybody who would like to speak in public comment?
So, good evening. My name is Greg Kulawick. I'm a parent in town. I have a kindergartner and a second grader at the Breznerhand School. I'm here in support with a group of parents that have some current concerns about the fundraiser and the Booster-Thon that took place last year and the previous school year. As a former public school educator for eight years in the Plymouth Public Schools and now as a consultant with schools, I work with schools across the country. I have concerns about the nature of the program, fundamentally the burden that's put on the children and the pressure that's put on them to raise funds on behalf of the PTO. I'm empathetic to the work the PTO is doing and the burden that's put on them to raise money. I understand what the funds are used for and the process that they're involved in. As a parent, the concern primarily comes from the anxiety and stress that I see being brought home when there's an expectation to raise money. I have concerns also about the lack of transparency when they come home with requests to raise money and then we push that request on to family members and friends in the community and we're not quite sure what percentage of money is going to different... allocated for different purposes. I know that's been brought up before. The other thing, just kind of as a former educator and getting to work with schools now and seeing processes that different schools work through, I think it's safe to say that we're all here because we want to do what's best for kids. From my experience as an educator, as a parent, seeing the impact on my kids when they come home, I can confidently say, like, I don't believe this process, this particular fundraiser in this school system at that grade level is the best thing for kids. Seeing the connection to fundraising with rewards, and I know certain reward systems were phased out from individual to collective at classrooms as a whole, but even just fundamentally philosophically, I don't believe that's the best approach in terms of generating money. There's lots of opportunities to raise money in various ways and I just oppose this as the process that we use at Newburyport Public Schools and particularly at the Breznerhand School.
Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, what was your last name again?
I'll put it on here.
Anybody else? Art?
My name's Art Curry. 100 State Street. And I have to go to City Hall because the world of waste is a topic that's there at 7:00. I want to just congratulate you all for moving forward, for what Bruce is going to present in terms of a district-wide sustainability committee. It's exactly a great step. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments?
Hi, my name is Monica Studra and I'm here also regarding the fundraiser. Actually, I appreciate that you took up the concerns we have raised about Booster-Thon in specific. And I was told that tonight there might be an opportunity to ask Booster-Thon specifically a few questions. I personally hope that the new criteria that school committee will establish will prevent companies like Booster-Thon to be here, but in case it is relevant for the topic around fundraisers, I wanted to mention one key concern a lot of people have about Booster-Thon and it's the fact that the fundraiser and the revenue share is not made transparent. So, I would like to know from Booster specifically if they considered making the share they take open and public to the parents when they sign up their children. Just the same way they inform us that the parents are responsible to help in collecting the funds, I think it would be fair for them to tell us there that that's an opportunity to tell us, hey, that's the share we'll be taking. And if they consider that, how they assess that will be impacting success of the fundraiser.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
I'm Lisa. I live on Washington Street and I have kids at the Breznerhand... or sorry, one kid at the Breznerhand. Next year, two.
Your last name, Lisa?
Montes. I'm A.T.A.S. I'd like to thank the school committee for creating this space for parents to explain their concerns regarding fundraisers that interrupt instructional time and take a large percentage from the community. First, I have a request for the school committee as they review fundraiser policy for groups such as the PTO operating with $100,000 budget of parent contributions. Could it be required that they post meeting minutes, agendas, and transparent specific budget numbers publicly and in a timely manner? As it currently stands, unless one attends meetings, which many can't, there is not access to current information. The second thing, as I heard that we could actually address the Booster-Thon today, I have a question for them. I'd like to know what formal accredited education do the employees entering the schools have to justify interrupting instructional time and the $40,000 that they walked away with? Thank you.
Any additional comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Cole, do we have any warrants?
Yes, we have three warrants. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $7,353.83 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Do I have a second? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Passes. Janine Ann Wissley?
The next warrant, I move that the following named bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $14,051.67 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
In the last warrant, I moved that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $45,994.84 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Passes. Janine Ann Wissley. We have a set of minutes as well. Don't have minutes... oh, yeah, we probably don't have minutes from last week because it was just last week.
Yeah, I couldn't get them to her until today, so she's...
That's fine.
I'll put them on until the next day.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. So, we don't have any minutes for this meeting. I will turn it over to the district staff, Assistant Superintendent, the superintendent for recognitions.
All right, great. First of all, we recognize some special educators today, continuing with... from our vaping forum and a lot of the great work that the district has been doing addressing vaping throughout our community. There are some educators who really, I think, have gone the distance to really do an incredible job throughout the district in working with our students. And Ms. Ricchio, who's gonna step up and who's really led this effort, but I also want to recognize Sue Anderson, Amy Heath, Jill Moran, Jay Murphy, Kristen Page, and Megan Tierney. Really collectively, all of the work that they've been doing, just not only educating our students, but also really providing great resources to students and families, and I can't thank them enough. But I know you wanted to say a few things.
No, you said it really well, Sean. And can you guys stand up? This is your gig here. So, it's Susan Anderson, Amy Heath, Jill Moran, Jay Murphy, Kristen Page, and Megan Tierney. And I just want you to know, I'm part of this... somehow I ended up on this statewide curriculum vaping forum that I... you know, so I'm meeting with like 20 people from across the state. And when I started to describe that I had all these different school staff and I have teachers, I have health educators, I have nurses, I have all these different people, and they spent the summer taking these extra online courses and then reading different things, designing handouts for students, staying after school. I could go on and on. They've gone above and beyond the call of duty. Well, to finish my statement, so these people look at me and they're like, wow! And you know what? I hope you feel that too, because Newburyport's kind of special. And so, okay, so this was written down. Members of the Newburyport Against Vaping Team... I love that name... that are being recognized for their outstanding dedication to students by completing the necessary coursework that has enabled them to effectively support students with a vaping addiction, but all types of addictions. It's actually... or, you know, caring for students. All six members have utilized the 12 module online smoking cessation course through the Center for Tobacco Research at UMass Medical Center. Actually, UMass came and did two focus groups with a lot of our school staff last year, and they're coming back to do specialized training for us March 20th. They also participated in those focus groups and they've answered surveys from the researchers about knowledge of student perception and staff understanding of cessation strategies. So, they are key components of the high school and middle school, and they're just really incredible people. So, anyways, here you go. So, you get up there, you get your picture taken with everybody.
Angela, want to bring them up?
Yeah.
Yeah, in deference to Mr. Gallagher's recent surgery, can you guys come up here? Come up here.
It's a team photo.
This is a sympathy dance. Just ignore it. It's not for you.
Thank you so much. Nice to see you. I haven't seen you in a while.
All right.
Do we have family members?
I'm in, Kathy.
Are there family members here? Come on up.
Come on!
He's the cousin.
Oh, yeah, bring the principal stuff here.
Good kids.
I know, Mr. Wolf.
We definitely love it.
Mrs. Furlong.
Come on.
Perfect.
She's taking pictures.
What a big happy family.
Okay, everybody, cheers.
Cheers!
No bacon.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Cole.
And you're gonna be... well, I got a whole thing for you. You're gonna get the side one.
I will be... I'll send you email this morning.
And just... I just want to reiterate, you know, I've been here for a year and a half and I can't say enough about this faculty and support staff. When there's a need in this community, they just respond, always go on, go beyond the call of duty and just really dedicate themselves to this, students and families here. So, I reiterate what Kathy Ricchio said. This is a very special community. We should be very proud of our faculty and support staff.
I also wanted to take a moment and note that this is Superintendent Gallagher's first appearance since recent leg surgery, knee surgery before the break, and we're very happy to have him here.
Thank you.
Wearing sneakers.
I can still beat you in a 40-yard dash.
You could probably beat me in a 20-yard dash. Our Newburyport High School student representative is here and has a report.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Peter Di Ambrosio and I'm the student representative to the Newburyport School Committee. And I have, for all of you, a brief summary of what the high school has been up to in the past month. So, a lot took place this weekend. The boys' basketball team simply competed on Saturday, and unfortunately, they did not win, but they had a tremendous season, making it to the quarterfinal round of the playoffs. The girls' basketball continues to dominate with their win at Saugus this past Friday. They play again Wednesday at St. John's Prep. Our theater department competed in the state drama festival this weekend at Andover High School. At this year's event, they performed a condensed version of Shakespeare's Twelfth Night. This past Saturday, Nora Morrissey represented the high school at the National Poetry Out Loud competition. And then, a group of students have been working with essential partners and will be facilitating dialogue at the Knokka Middle School between students and teachers this Wednesday. We hope that the conversation creates opportunities for both adults and students to speak honestly about their lives at school and to help make the Knokka the kind of place where teachers and students can talk openly about what makes for good learning and participation. So, we're really excited to be doing that. March 16th will be the start of spring... will be the start of spring sports. Can't believe it, but it's there already. And then also that week will be Spirit Week. The student council is still working out the details, but the week will most definitely end with a recognition rally. And then Academic Awards Night, it's going to be held April 2nd, and those... the list of students that are invited to attend that celebration has been posted and published for any... to be able to be checked for accuracy for both parents and students. Excuse me. And then finally, on behalf of the entire high school, I would like to wish Mr. Gallagher a speedy recovery from his surgery. Thank you.
Wow, thank you.
Wow, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Good, thank you very much.
I think this seems like another snow day.
Great job. The next item on our agenda is the statement of interest, which has been circulated. We can... I don't know how the mayor would like to proceed, but we can have some conversation. Steve?
Before you people leave, someone left a phone up here. It says Lisa Furlong?
But Steve, if you would like to sort of join us up here, people have questions. How would you want to proceed?
Just to... I think everyone is aware that... and I think most of the school committee, as well as many city councils, have taken a tour of the high school. And we have a statement of interest before us. And again, this is the very, very, very first step in the mass school building authority process where they require in order to even be considered in the pipeline for a project, which usually takes a couple years, updates to the statement of interest. That's why this is going in for April 8. And the school committee will take the first vote and then it will go into the city council packet for their meeting on Monday. I think Steve Barcom did an exceptional job putting together a comprehensive statement of interest for you to review, which I had sent out to you earlier in the week. And then there were a couple minor, minor edits, so I sent you a revised copy this afternoon. So, I don't know if you want to just walk us through the overall plan and what we're looking at in terms of both projects for the upgraded science labs as well as the roof? Steve, if you'd be so kind, just to give us an overview of the overall plan?
Sure. So, yeah, basically, we're combining... we've talked over the last couple years about a couple different things at the high school. The roof project, where we've been kind of patching things up and keeping things dry inside the building the best we can with some funds that the city council allocated a couple years ago. We've still got about half of the original $20,000 that they allocated, so we're doing pretty well as far as that goes. So, we've still got some time with that roof before we really need to get it done. So, we're combining it along with the science wing renovation and additions project that, you know, we're really just, as the mayor said, at the beginning stages here. It's just... the statement of interest is really just an indicator to the MSBA that we are interested in partnering with them on a project to improve what we have for facilities for all of the STEM curriculum. I think you're all pretty familiar with what the building looks like and what the labs are and the problems we have with that... in that regard. So, I mean, that's basically it in a nutshell. The process from here is that the... once the statement of interest is approved by both the school committee and city council, we submit it to MSBA. They look at it in combination with all of the others that they get from across the state. Typically, in a given year, they get anywhere from 100 to 125 new statements of interest. They rank them based on a number of factors and based on urgency of... urgency of need. They... it's a competitive process. It's not a first come, first served thing. It's... they're looking to see which projects are in most need of urgency. And, you know, they rank them and then eventually, they... if they think our project is worthy of their attention this year, they will set up a senior study visit, which is a group of engineers, architects, and MSBA staff that comes out to the site to look at what we're looking to do and just gather more information so that they can make a final decision on whether or not to invite us into their process. If they do... if they do decide to do a senior study on our building, that would be sometime in the fall. Of that timeframe, that's really the only schedule that they give us at this point as far as how quickly they're gonna react to any of the statements of interest.
And then usually, if they don't accept you that given year, they ask you to update your statement of interest for the next year. And we've been through that process. I think we submitted six for Knokka-Mothen before we were able to get into the pipeline.
Yeah.
And then, you know, once we're accepted, then it's the responsibility of the city council and the school committee to appropriate money for a feasibility study. And then, at that point, once the feasibility study has been completed, we have a much... we have a really good sense of the direction we would be going in. I mean, a roof's a roof, but I think in terms of the science wing and labs, we'd have a much better sense of working with them about what we're looking at. You know, we went out and visited schools all over in the Northeast before we made decisions regarding school. We would go look at other labs. We'd look at what other communities are doing. So, this is just the very, very first step forward.
Other questions? I actually had one, Steve. Is there a reason why these are bundled together, these two sort of needs?
Yeah, MSBA does not want you to put in a statement of interest for something like a roof project and then come back to them a couple years later with... if you've got a bigger project in mind. They want to look at the building as a whole for efficiency reasons and economics. So, you know, they'll... it's possible that if and when we do partner with them, they may... and their engineers may want to look at other things that we haven't even thought of yet, because they'll want to, you know, make sure that we are, you know, doing things the right way and upgrading and making the building as efficient as we can as part of this project.
Other questions? Again, part of the reason that we're applying to the MSBA is because there's reimbursement on the project.
That's correct. And they would reimburse us, the city, at about 50%.
Steve, earlier you talked about, just in our joint ed meeting, about the roof at the Knokka and like how we might apply to be on a different repair... repair list. Does that operate a little differently, that list? As far as like, you know, would... if we get on the asset, does that take three years or could that be much quicker because it's a repair less opposed to a...
That's called the accelerated repair program because it's designed to work more quickly. It would be, once you're invited into that program, it's a much quicker turnaround as far as how that goes.
Okay.
How do they gauge urgency for... like we're saying, the science rooms don't work for hoped science curriculum. I would imagine that's a tough thing to peg urgency to.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably some... it's probably subjective to a point, but they have a number of different things they look at. You know what, actually, let me pass these around because this... this kind of summarizes the whole statement of interest process. So, they look at... they came in 2016, they went out to, I think, every school district in the state and did a study at that point. So, they've got all kinds of data from that study that they look at to kind of compare the relative condition of one set of one school to another, or one school district to another. They look at information from the DESE. They look at information that we give them on the statement of interest and information that they gather when they come do the senior studies. So, they just, you know, it's just an information gathering process that they go through and, you know, that's what they're trying to do.
I guess I was just... when you're reading it, I was just wondering if we should sell it.
Well, when they come out to do the senior study, that's exactly what we need to do. We need to really sell it.
If they come out to do the senior study, right?
No, when they come out to do it. We're thinking positive here.
I guess that's what I'm saying. Like, it says, like, we'd like to do this to be able to better meet the standards, to better meet the new science curriculum. But I'm wondering, like, if we said something like, you know, two-thirds of this new science standards we can't reach, you know, if we had something more concrete for them to... I mean, as much as I want this, it sounds like we just want a really nice new science wing.
Would that be part of the more extended proposal, Steve?
Well, that's, you know, when they come out to do the senior study, you know, I think at that point, we've got to really have a good team of educators and administrators available for that meeting to really explain the reasons why we're not able to do what we want to do from a curriculum standpoint.
And plus, you also have the roof tied into this too. Tied into this whole project.
Do we have a sense, Steve, in terms of... because I know that, I mean, you look at Amesbury, for example, is now building an elementary school, which is smaller than ours, and it's almost twice the cost of what we paid for ours when we built ours, because we got in before construction went crazy. Do we have a sense that, you know, I know that high schools are talking 125, $200 million for some of these projects. Do they try and balance now between a small $14 million project that could make a huge difference in Newburyport versus needing $200 million to build a new high school and puberty, say? Do they do a combination of those or is it all based on some type of...
As far as from everything that I've read, it's just, it's based on urgency.
Okay.
On their perception of urgency. On their perception of urgency. So, I, I don't know if, and what, and funding that they have available each given year. So, you know, they may look at it and say, okay, we can fit a smaller project in with all these other bigger projects.
So, we just happen to have like 7 million left over then?
Yeah. So, that could, that could play in there, into their thinking as well, that, you know, it's, it's a smaller project that they can fit into a given year.
I mean, to the fact that the roof really needs to be done, does that play into more of the urgency?
Definitely, yeah.
We had to wait till it hit that right timeframe because that's the last time we weren't at the 25 years, so, but we're now over that. So, that's helpful, too.
We were at the Saugus game the other night. Dave and I were. Their, their cost for their high school that they're just about done with is 160 million.
That's a, I think it's a middle.
It's a middle high school.
Yeah.
It's a chunk of change.
And they have the Saugus mall playing taxes there, so.
Right, yeah.
Is that for the whole building or a roof?
That's for the building.
They have a great, yeah, whole school.
Yeah.
Probably gonna be phenomenal, I would imagine.
Yeah.
What they'll, they'll Drake it, you know, this building school up there, right? New high, new middle school up there. Not the family, just like.
Yeah.
Additional questions?
Any additional questions?
When we sign on this, are we, are we saying to somebody that will have our half, like if push comes to shove and this comes to fruition in four years, that, that we're also good to go? Do they?
Not now.
No.
When we vote on the feasibility study, that's when we're actually committing as a community, that we, if we put money forward in the feasibility study and we get, you know, we're accepted at that point and we vote to put money towards the feasibility study, we're committed, really.
Basically, yes.
But that's the other way?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, up in the air. Depends on how soon they pull it, accept us and.
Essentially, this is a statement of interest. We wanna partner with the state. It's not, it's not a commitment on their part or our part at this point, but it gets us in the queue. It gets us in the line.
So, I'm gonna read. I, I meant to print it, but I didn't.
I want you to.
Sure, thank you. We are resolved, having convened in open meeting on March 2nd, 2020, prior to the closing date, the Newburyport School Committee of Newburyport, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Mass School Building Authority the statement of interest dated February 28th, 2020, for the Newburyport High School located at 241 High Street, Newburyport, Matt, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Mass School Building Authority in the future. Number one is the inadequate science labs. Two is the roof repair. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Mass School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Mass School Building Authority, or permits to the city, town, regional district to filing an application for finding with the Mass School Building Authority.
Did you get all that, Mrs. Kennedy?
Thank you. He sits down.
So, that's essentially a motion.
Do I have somebody, are you, are you making?
Making that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Second. Do we have discussion? Should we do just?
Roll call vote for the cert.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, yes, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Another sort of joyful task that we have before us is the appointment with a reappointment of one of the representatives from Newburyport to Whittier School, Regional School Board. If you can come up. This is Brett Murphy. And Brett, you are interested in serving again and maybe you can talk to us a little bit about how the experience has been and?
It's been a very good experience. I'll be going if I am reappointed. This will start my 17th year there.
Wow. It can't be that long.
I think even Steve would probably be longer than me.
Don't anybody look up the vote for his first term.
As you know, Whittier's, has come a long way, 17 years. Do you have any questions for me, I guess?
You're currently the acting chairman?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
And that period ends at the end of this month, is that correct?
Yes.
I, I just have a comment and that is that I have found Brett to be a strong advocate for the kids in this district and for this district. And there has been, I think, a very steady improvement in dialogue and our collaboration in the time that he's been there. I ascribe some of that to his particular skills and passion and interest.
The applications are up, the acceptance is up. Our graduation rate's 97%. Felt good there.
Can you explain this to me about that? Applications are up, so more kids are applying?
Yes.
And acceptance are up, meaning that more of the kids who apply are getting in?
From Newburyport, I'm speaking about Newburyport. We had, this year, we had a big increase in applications overall. Our student population is 1,250 right now, which is high. We're at that capacity. School choice is basically wiped out. I think we have two students left that are existing. We're not accepting school choice anymore, just in district.
Can you explain that, too? The Volk School takes school choice kids?
We did. We did.
Because?
A couple of years ago, we voted not to take anymore. There's two left that are probably seniors now that were, you know, are already in the system.
So, that would be because there were fewer kids applying than you had seats in general?
We were trying to increase the in-district student population.
So, when you say school choice, you mean like out of region?
Correct.
When you say in district, you mean like?
Yeah. Florence, Lowell, New Hampshire.
I got it. So, it wasn't choicing from Newburyport, it was, you applied from Newburyport, you chose from another region?
That's correct.
Because they want this?
Newburyport's in district.
They want this whole school versus their Volk School.
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that there's been a real push on the part of the mayors across the Commonwealth who've been concerned about the admissions procedures. And I think I mentioned, mentioned to you, we were meeting with Secretary Pfizer last week, and I know Desi's looking at the admissions criteria in Volk Tech schools. I'm not sure what's gonna happen with that, but, you know, there was some concern that there was not sort of this equity across the board in terms of admissions. And I think Whittier's done a pretty decent job. We've had a couple cases over the years that we've, you know, sort of gone to bat for and have called and followed up with administration when, you know, kids have been just really upset that they hadn't been accepted. But I think overall, we've developed over, I would say, the last 15 years, a pretty good working relationship with Whittier. We've seen them expanding programs, being receptive, responsive. You know, I think you're right in terms of their MCAS, their graduation rates overall, doing well. You don't have any indication at this point about where things are with the capital needs? I know the superintendent had called me and said that you had been accepted into the Mass School Building Authority. So, we will have a piece of that, too, the capital plan at some point down the road.
Right. That'll be, that'll be in our capital plan this year for the feasibility study.
And then we would know more in terms of what the distribution will be to all the partners?
Correct.
Okay.
That'll be coming up, as you know, shortly.
Okay.
Any further questions, comments?
Just real quick, sorry, on the admissions thing, do, does each school who's part of your district get a certain amount of seats? Is that how that works?
It's, it's open to as many seats. The applications are open. Anybody can apply that's in district. There's no certain number for any town. It goes, it just goes by whoever applies and where they stand as far as the acceptance on the application. Naturally, there's more kids from Hable because there's, Hable's just such a big community compared to, you know, Newburyport and Rowland.
That's what you're asking, though, right? You're asking if, because Hable's bigger, do they have a certain amount of seats that they get to go?
Yeah, like proportionally speaking?
No, there's no.
Or a certain amount of seats reserved to us or are we competing with?
No.
Like, could it be one year that Newburyport's, all of our kids don't get in because the admission process is that their kids are more aligned with the criteria?
No, there's no seat limit per town. That's what you're asking.
Or quota. So, we're not guaranteed really any seats.
One of the things that you'll see over the years is that the demographics of Newburyport have changed. For instance, when Whittier Tech first opened in the 1970s, it wasn't uncommon for 125 kids from Newburyport to go to Whittier Tech. What would you say the numbers are now?
There's 33 right now from Newburyport.
33. So, the demographics have changed. Back then, it was really, you had a lot of tradespeople in town. If you wanted to have a home, you swung a hammer. If you wanted to take care of your car, you learned how to fix it yourself. So, the demographics have changed. So, there's fewer, there's kind of fewer kids seeking vocational careers now than there were in the 70s, for example, out of Newburyport.
So, we have 30, you said 33 kids, not through 12?
There's 33 total into school right now from Newburyport.
And how many apply each year?
Last year, there was 15 applicants and 12 were accepted.
But the only other option is if the student who's interested in a vocational technical education and Whittier doesn't have agriculture and husbandry?
They go to Essex.
They go to North Shore.
The Ivy, right?
Yeah. But it's only if they wanna major in that program. And we usually get maybe one or two students.
A year, yeah.
A year who do that.
All right. Well, motion to approve Brett Murphy's reappointment to represent Newburyport as the school committee member at Whittier Volk Tech.
So, Volk School.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
That's good discussion. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There wouldn't be anybody opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your continued service.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion about, some discussion about fundraising. There's been a lot of discussion in the community. The PTO would like to just have an opportunity to share some of their perspective with us. Amy Sullivan is here, I think, and if you would introduce, come up and introduce the PTO, that would be great. And then I would ask them to join us up here, right? Well, they can stand. I just want you comfortable.
I have a conflict. I get tamed by the PTO on a regular basis for consulting, so I'm gonna recuse myself from making comments.
Amy, yes?
Hi. Good evening. So, tonight, we have our communication.
The room or the table? Okay.
Sorry. You're recusing yourself.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll send somebody up for you.
I'll probably be able to hear it.
Actually, I could use a cup of tea. If you're gonna be bothered.
Castor?
I could use a cup of tea. If he's going, I'll, or pizza, yeah, okay. Good, thank you, Amy.
Okay. So, tonight, we have our treasurer of the PTO, Pam San Antonio, and we have our communication representative, Amanda Bugley. So, if you guys would like to come on up, do you want them to come up?
Yep, sure.
Maybe we can get?
The microphone up.
One more.
Yeah. More comfortable standing. Would you like seats or would you like to stand?
No, we can.
Good. Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you.
You don't want to stand? Okay. You know what, I'll put it here in case if it's like. Thank you.
Trying to be comical here. Thank you. Good?
Go ahead. So, I'm Pam. And we're, we're just here to talk a little bit about what the, you know, what the fundraisers that the PTO hold, what they provide in the schools, and just to answer any questions that anyone here might have on, you know, where, where the need for the fundraising comes from. So, you know, first of all, we, you know, we do a number of fundraisers. We hold, you know, smaller fundraisers, like selling wreaths, and we do other larger fundraisers, like the Booster-Thon and the Kitchen Tour. All in all, the PTO raises just over $80,000. In turn, we put $80,000 back into the schools. The biggest chunk of that budget is we fund the field trip buses. Buses are expensive. It costs around, last year, we spent around $21,000 on bus alone. The next biggest chunk of the budget goes to assemblies.
Sorry, assemblies?
Assemblies, yes. So, we have a cultural and reference team who works with all of, all three schools and the administration and, you know, the different staff at the school to help bring in a number of great assemblies. And that's around, it's around $14,500.
Pam, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to make sure that we sort of understand. The, the PTO is not limited to a single school. It serves?
It's correct. It's pre-K through eight.
I mean, we, each school used to have a PTO, but now?
Yeah, so there's one merged PTO now and it serves K, well, pre-K really through eight.
Pre-K through what?
Through eight. Through eight. So, the Brezner Hand, then Moeller Hand, then Knott are all serve under this field of PTO. So, some of the, you know, smaller things that, you know, we fund every year include, we give like $500 to the senior celebration. We give $2,000 to the Camp Kia Scholarship, which is something that sixth graders do. And there's a number of families who, you know, they don't have the means to send their child who's interested in attending the leadership camp. So, we provide scholarship money towards that. We also fund the eighth grade trip to DC, same, same grounds for kids who are looking for extra funds for that. You know, a number of smaller things that we have as an activity account. It gives a small amount to each school based on the number of students in each school. And the, the schools can use that at their discretion towards different activities of that school. We do fun events, like we just celebrated that 150th day of school. It was on the snow day, unfortunately, and so it was a little delayed that day.
It's a joke show.
The hazmat situation. So, but nonetheless.
I feel like, since Brian recused himself, I feel like I have to say something.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
You don't.
So, nonetheless, the, you know, kindergarten's a great time. They don't, they don't mind. So, outside of our budget, we also sometimes get things from teachers or staff who are looking for extra assistance and something they're wanting to fund. For instance, we upped our amount to the Washington DC that has a current pandemic for financial aid this year. So, they came to us and said, could you provide us more than budgeted? We agreed that we could. So, that was something nice. Also, we recently provided like some snacks for the nurses' stations just to have, for them to have on hand, that they were taking money out of their own pockets instead, you know, to give children who come to the hungry during the day and have those snacks on hand. You know, we also do the STEM fair at the Brezner Hand and the, the Moeller Science Fair, which is the kids who hold up the fair, but it's a has, you know, expenses related to that that the PTO provides. We just today started the after-school program at the Brezner Hand, which kind of went away for a little while, we brought it back. This is again, more of a, a service than a fundraiser. It does generate a little bit of money, which mostly goes to paying instructors. We receive a small statement for coming in and they have different activities and games that happen for a couple of hours after school that kids are, it runs for six weeks. Kids are, go straight from the classroom to soccer or, or games or piano or whatever the case. may be. And then there's a coordinator who's onsite who also receives the stipend, so the monies from that do generally cover those instructors and the coordinator and a school nurse to be on hand when needed. You know, other types of fundraisers, we have a week sale, and we have a couple, we sell spiritware. But indeed, the biggest chunk of our budget this past two years has come through the Booster Thon fundraiser, and it was something that was brought to the PTO by a parent who, her niece and nephew had done it in Florida, I believe. And, you know, we were looking, it was my first year on the PTO, but the PTO was looking for something to replace the Spring K or Spring 5K fundraiser, the actual race, which was kind of dying out a little. It's a lot of work, and there wasn't a lot of people looking for it. So I think that's kind of where this jumped in, because it said, you know, we have this team of people who come in, they're professional fundraisers, are here to help support schools who are looking to raise money in a new and fun and exciting way. So we looked into it, and given the volunteership and the lack thereof, I guess it just said the PTO did elect the option to have Booster sort of take over and run it at a high level, which is the level that, you know, we continue to do over the last couple of years, which it does take a larger percentage because they're doing the majority of the work, whereas our parent volunteership has sort of dropped off, and we were really struggling to find people to run the fundraisers. And so they've been fairly helpful in providing the services, and, you know, it was in line with our other fundraisers that we run, with Meadow Farms and the Moonens, and while those things obviously don't generate as much, you know, they are in line with the same amount of percentage that is taken. So, you know, we're always open to finding alternatives. I think that we started some good discussions with the parents who have concerns, the people who have alternative ideas, so we're hoping that we can keep these programs running. I mean, I've been to a couple of these meetings now over the last couple of months. I'm not sure that, you know, the school is prepared to take on an additional $80,000 in expenses or 20 towards buses or assemblies, and the PTO is, you know, grateful to be able to help provide these services and keep them going in our community when, you know, parents and community members are willing to give their time and... I have a few more. I mean, if anybody wanted a copy of this, which definitely sounds a bit fun.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, I just had other people have questions, because I have a few. Thank you. Well, I'm happy to start. The Boosterthon seems to be the one that has generated the most conversation. And I know that we have asked them to, we've made a choice to work with them where they're providing a high level of support, which diminishes the amount of money that we take, increases the amount that they take. There are other levels?
There are.
And what are the factors at those other levels?
So we actually have some of the folks from the Boosterthon here, if you wanted to hear specifics.
A factor, do you mean a factor in why the PTO chose?
Yes, no, I, yeah.
Honestly, volunteership. There's, you know, a group, a kind of us who seem to run most of the fundraising, so I know it wasn't, it didn't seem totally feasible for, given the amount of work that we know goes into what they set up and the services they provide, it was going to be a lot for, especially this year, running at two schools at the same simultaneously, it was going to be a lot for a few people to try to run successfully.
So that's one of the drivers for?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that in terms of our initial, we, you know, using Boosterthon, I don't think that any of us really anticipated it would be as successful as it was. I mean, the goal was really to replace the 5K, which was generating around 15,000 to 20,000. You know, that was our ideal picture, was to garnish, you know, a replacement. It was bigger than we expected, and we actually used the surplus that we gained in that first year to fund some additional things to our budget, including PBIS initiatives. So, you know, I think that that's where it's come from. It seemed, you know, like it's in line with our other fundraisers, what they take, you know, Meadow Farms, original art, Moonen, you know, it seemed at the time when we started, this is, you know, on par, I guess, with the other fundraisers. And then when it grew as big as it did, you know, I think that's where the difficulties kind of come in, because it is a larger chunk of money. I mean, you're earning $3,000 on, you know, selling ramping paper and giving away 1,500, it's not the same as earning 60,000 on fundraiser and, you know, paying for the service of nearly half that cost, you know, it's a bigger number, so I think it has a bigger impact on perception for the community. But I don't, it was never the PTO's, you know, our goal was never to hide the amount of money. It was, you know, we talked about it every month, what we spent, what we're deciding to do, and, you know, I don't think that the expectation of, you know, asking, asking, you know, people to support a fundraiser and including the amount of money that goes to, towards expenses is really realistic. I don't know that it should be part of the promotion. I think that the information is available to anyone who's looking. I think that we never felt like we weren't being transparent. I think that's sort of the concern that arose, but it was not really intended.
Just on a year-to-year basis, I would be really interested in hearing sort of what, how does your budget come together and how do you make choices as a PTO body about ways in which you're going to raise money? There must be some, I mean, you guys have been doing it a long time, so there must be some sort of regular process, and that would be helpful to hear.
Yeah. I mean, I said, like I said, I've been in the school for just three years, and when I came on, you know, it seems like most of the things that happen are repeat things that have been happening in the schools for many, many years. I do find that the cultural enrichment has changed a little. We have a really robust team right now, so I think that whereas a lot of the assemblies were things that have been repeated for eight, nine, 10, 12 years, you know, they're bringing in some new things to, you know, spread the different, the different things that are available at different levels of the schools, whereas sometimes it was like just certain things happening at one school opposed to the others. So I think that sort of is a deciding factor in what we're spending on. But mostly, it's just what past expenses, and I think that's just what happens with anything. Things get more expensive every year. The buses get more expensive every year, the, you know, the T-shirts that you provide get more expensive every year, and all the costs in general go up. And so when, you know, you find a fundraiser that helps to cover those expenses, you know, it's something you kind of want to.
Right. And how, for the process of sort of, you talked about having a pretty robust cultural enrichment group right now. So I mean, I assume that as, like, doing the fundraisers, the level of volunteerism at the PTO kind of helps drive, you know, cultural enrichment is going to be focused on because you've got a group of people that really are interested in that.
Well, true. I just do really...
My understanding is, at this point, that's a group.
Really fantastic. Really enthusiastic.
So they've been...
How are those, how are their conversations informed? Are they talking to teachers and principals and other parents?
Yes, so they're constantly reaching out to administration and working in the schools, and sometimes they have direct lines of communication. We have teacher reps on the PTO, so who, you know, regularly converse with them to find out, you know, what was needed, what worked, what didn't maybe work last time that we could replace.
Other question I want to, you don't want to ask?
I wonder if you could talk, because I know that some of the comments that we've heard in the previous school committee meeting and a little bit tonight was about the fact that it happens during school time. Could you talk a little bit about that decision, how that was made, how you worked with, you know, maybe the school administration integrated that? And then the other thing I heard was about the prizes that people didn't really like, that they were like junk.
So I could speak specifically to the prizes. When we started the Boosterthon, part of the, part of the way that they run it is there was individual prizes for kids based on how many pledges they got, how much money they raised, you know, you raised a dollar, you got a bracelet, you raised five dollars, you got a axe, you raised 10, you got a bike. We did that the first year. It didn't have the best feedback, so the second year we ran it, we tried to do a little bit less in the way of individual prizes, but still keep some of them and do some more classroom prizes, like, you know, an extra recess for the class where the class has the highest number of people logging on or something like that. And that still wasn't received as well as we wanted it to be, so this year, we did away with all individual prizes. It was all classroom-based or grade-level based. It was a little bit like extra recess, pajama day, I think there was a dance party one day. So that kind of thing, we worked really closely with the administration, trying to find what we thought were age-appropriate and, you know, day-appropriate incentives that we could use for the classroom.
So the impact during the school day in terms of the program?
So, excuse me, the way it runs right now is the Boosterthon folks come in, they spend about, I think it's usually about five, 10 minutes in a classroom. The administration comes up with a schedule that works for the classes and the teachers. They talk about, the Boosterthon's based on character values, they have a story, and the values are part of that story, so each day they pick a different value to talk about. They talk about with the kids, how they think they could, you know, use that in their daily lives, and that's really it.
But this year's theme was gratitude and honesty.
And honesty. And then the only other time that it really is in the school is on the day of the fundraiser. I know at the Brezner Hand, I think we were doing half an hour, 45 minutes for a grade level. Half the kids would run, half the kids would cheer, and then they'd switch. I wasn't at the Mullen because my son had the flu, but I think it ran very similarly. So that was, me too.
Other comments, questions?
I guess I have a lot of things spinning. First of all, I want to reiterate something we talked about last week, or it was just last week, which is, I want to make sure that you guys realize how thankful we are, because that's a ton of money overall, and it's a ton of things it sounds like you guys are doing for the schools, and there are not a ton of you. So you can only imagine the amount of hours we're talking about, so we want to really make sure you understand our gratitude and that this is not coming from a place of antagonism or skepticism so much as, you know, maybe there's some things we can do better about it. I think the easy piece to tackle might be the messaging, right? So, and I don't need answers tonight, we don't, we're not going to come up with answers tonight, but how can we, in recognizing that this is not a business, you guys have other things to do with your time, right? How can we, let's think about how to support you so that maybe we can post what's going on, come up with some sort of, leave a place on our website, some information, this is what's happening. Maybe it doesn't need to go into the fundraiser documents right then and there, but at some point on the website, people can read about Meadow Farms or Boosterthon or whatever it is, this is what it looks like, this is the structure, this is what's going on.
Just, do you guys have a page on the district website? Are you on each of the school pages? Or are you not on any of the school pages?
No, they have a link.
A link to it?
We do have a website. We don't, we haven't for the past few years, have someone volunteer in order to keep that updated.
The guy just recused himself.
But he, I understand. I'm not going to get into that story, but he used to do that.
Right.
I will only bring up, we have talked in the past that there's got to be a student somewhere in the district?
That would be amazing.
Who knows what they're talking about and might take this on as a community service project.
We did, we did recently have a parent volunteer, so we're more than going to be reaching out to them, so...
But it would be really nice to be there.
Right, so a parent or student or somebody, like, maybe that's some way we can help you guys sort of...
Currently, we use a lot of social media for posting of, and we rely on tools to send out, you know, and who doesn't, their email blast, funded a shit. But absolutely.
Again, there's got, there's got to be a way to work that out.
Yeah, I think we've made some really good progress in the past couple of weeks.
You know, and I will agree that I think the scope of the amount of money you're collecting brings some of the ire. And if you were collecting 500 bucks and the company took 500 bucks, you'd be like, okay, that'll be good, but when the company takes 40,000 to 50,000, now we're starting to question things, right? So, but I think that the communication of it is probably the more tactical part, right, that we can just find a way to help you out with. The philosophical thing that I think we're going to have to think about is, you know, the desirable, the level of desirability for the programs you're talking about versus some of the side effects that we're talking about, right? Especially in the day and age where, you know, we're just not getting a ton of, as many parents with the time, the capacity to step up as might be needed to raise that kind of money, right? And the other, I think, form of doing that was mentioned was to just, you know, lay out an activities fee for each grade level, which also has pluses or minuses. They do that in seventh grade, we've been talking about for the place-based education. All seventh grade families just, I think it's like 70 dollars or something like that, you just pay it upfront in September. I don't know how people are going to feel about that, but that's just part of, just going to be part of the conversation moving forward. Obviously, that could take a lot of time off your hands, right? But poof, all that building, all that fundraiser is gone because we're just going to pay for it, but I don't really know. So I guess I don't have any more questions. I just wanted to lay that out, that that's kind of where we are, is to figure out, as Bruce put it, what does, what does it cost to actually do school?
Right.
Right? I mean, you're saying you're funding buses, but at the same time, I know, you know, when the field trip bills come in, usually they come with a bill that says the buses cost, so at some point, you're subsidizing.
Subsidizing buses.
Right? And then maybe you're paying for some field trip buses and subsidizing for others. I don't really know how that, how that works.
Yeah, there's a certain level for a field trip.
You know, and maybe that could be part of, on the schools to do a little public PR and say, hey, guys, thanks for the PTO, because without this, it would cost three times as much, kind of thing. I don't really know what the answer to that is, but it's certainly going to be all part of discussion moving forward.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's, it's fair to talk about sort of where the school committee is at with these things, based on a number of conversations we've had at policy and previous meetings. There, the finance committee working with Nancy Lysick is going to gather all the information we possibly can, including historic data, about what monies we've been raising, what monies we're spending, how much, you know, not just for you guys, but alumni groups and all the other groups. One of the, and part of the reason that I feel very strongly about that is for years, we have not really captured... we have not really captured that information in our budget conversation. So it seems to me that if you guys are raising $80,000 and that's being put towards cultural enrichment, and we're not capturing that as an expense of the schools, it's not in our budget, we're not sharing with the community what it actually costs to run the school district. There's that chunk that's sort of like hidden. So, so I think that that's really important. So once we get a lot of that information and data, we will then have, and we will continue to have a conversation, we'll work closely with policy. Policy is going to take a look at some recommendations, some overarching recommendations about fundraising and about how we would like kids to be involved or not involved with that. And that, those conversations, both sets of conversations are going to be going on at the same time. Hopefully, the finance one will inform some of what we're doing here. So, so that's, I think that's where we stand. I, I fully expect that they'll have policies before the end of the school year for us to, you know, make, take some votes on. But something that Dave said that I really want to sort of emphasize is that we want to figure out how we can support the work that you're doing. I, I, you know, it's, it's absolutely critical to what's going on in the schools. Part of that may be encouraging you guys to have more conversations with the community, in the community. And if there's any way that we can, or the superintendent or any one of us can help make that happen, I think that that would be really useful. There's a lot of different ideas out there. If, if nothing else has happened with this discussion that we've had, a number of parents have stepped forward with ideas about how we might do this. And I would really love to see that conversation continue. I don't know that that conversation needs to take place here. I, I do see that as more of a site kind of thing, but I would really like to encourage that and offer whatever support you think you need from the school committee to help make those conversations happen and be productive. Are there other people who have other things they want to say? Do we have any questions for the Boosterathon folks that are here? I assume they're here, right? Yeah, hey.
Thank you guys for coming out. I mean, we read your brochure last week, so I think that answered like the method. I mean, it makes sense, no one, no one thinks you guys are the villains either, so please don't take it that way. You know, everything you're doing, you're not doing people doing it that way, right?
Would you like us to address the question from Phila comment, or what's the best way to receive the back?
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah, it's fine.
Sure.
Yeah, sure, come on up. And introduce yourself and sign in. Got to know where you live. I know where you live. All right, thank you. Thank you.
We'll sign in. My name's Roffe Mason, I'm the general manager for Booster in the area, mom of three. Fun fact, I'm experiencing my own program that I run for the first time as a parent this week, so that's been kind of fun. I live in Hanover, Massachusetts, and Andy, do you want to introduce yourself?
Absolutely. How about you, who's next?
I'm Siobhan Bacon, I have been part of the program each of the three years that it's run here. Originally from Milis, but I live now in Loober. I am glad to be here.
Awesome, thank you. And I'm Andy Bullard, father of four. We go, we range from eighth grade down to kindergarten and worked with Roffe, our general manager here, as well as our New York markets in Connecticut and Philadelphia, on and on, I won't bore you with all the cities. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you so much for allowing us to be here. I'd also like to say thank you to the brave individuals who share the comments because without feedback, no one can ever get better. And so I think it's awesome that you're addressing things like this because for us walking into a room where we don't know anybody except for our wonderful people here at our schools, we don't know what Newburyport is thinking about Boosterathon. So this is great for us, it's educational, it's feedback. I will say, we do this quite often in many states and many districts, and we, we appreciate that because it gives us a chance to get to know each other. We started as a family-owned company, I'm not going to give you the whole history, but we're a family-owned company, started very mom and pop, and then next thing you know, it doubled the school's previous efforts because we were able to connect the school to new donors. And so while, you know, looking at different percentages, we have options to where literally you just use our tech platform and then, and it's a very small fee and you're done. But there's an enrichment piece to it with the, with the educational and the, and the character side of things where schools have continually rebooked with us. So over 90% of our schools nationwide rebook with us every single year. And one of the main reasons we hear is not only from the enrichment side, but because we helped introduce new donors to the school that had never given before. And so, you know, when you look at the different, the varying percentages, et cetera, a lot of times, if you look at it, your parents' money, with your parents' funds that have been given, the large vast majority of that stays with the school. A lot of times, us helping new donors from the outside come in that may or may not ever give to the school, that obviously there's a bit of a revenue share with the total amount. So.
Can you, can you share with us, because I don't think it was sort of common knowledge in the community, we found out about it much later in the process, but there are levels at which communities can choose to engage you if they're going to engage you.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. So you had asked about the transparency of what goes back. So all of our programs work off of a sliding scale, so the more school raises, the more they keep. We're very transparent about that scale. It's in the contract that was in the schools, we have communication where we can put that in for PTOs, so that's not something we're ashamed of. We're open with that, and each time we meet with a school and we rebook for the second year, we walk through, hey, what is the best option for your school this year? We have an option like Andy said, where schools profit 90% of the funds raised. We provide the tech platform, we provide a few general templates of, hey, this is the easiest way to explain what a fundraiser is. And then schools can customize it and create the site themselves, they get all the technology on the site. We also have an option where we provide everything you need, so the resources, materials, the print, the incentives, which can look different, like we already discussed, whether that's classroom, individual. We do have some schools that don't do any incentives and it's just a character-based program, and that works too. And with that program, schools start at a profit of 65%, and it moves up in their favor as they grow smaller. We also have an option where we come on the first day, we set the volunteers up for success, we kind of count out all the inventory, answer any teacher questions, we come back on the fundraiser day, but those middle days of character enrichment and motivation to get pledges are handled by volunteers. And then we have an option where we are there live on campus. To your question about what does it look like when we go into classrooms, we never go into a classroom without being invited with our live program, it's up to.
Question. I'm sorry. What educational background do people have to go into classrooms? And the second question I want, was actually, if you consider making a transfer, not just to the PTO, but to the parents when they sign up their children, just the way you also make a transfer, the parents have it almost to help you collect the money. So those are the two questions being raised.
Yeah, so with the education of what the background is, we have a local team, we have a very rigorous hiring process to make sure they're, they are the type of person we want around students. We do not take it lightly, we're dealing with your students and your money, and those are two very important, very important things to parents. So the people that we have on site, one, they're not teaching anything, they're going into supporting the teachers or teaching our character lessons, which are designed in the content, the script, the wording is all designed by educators, parents across America. We have a group called Blueprinters, we bring them in, they help us craft the exact wording we're using on site so that it's what teachers are already teaching on campus. It's PBIS-aligned, we're using those same words so it aligns with what schools are already teaching. So no one's going into class and teaching a lesson that they kind of came up with on their own. We're there to support the teachers. Today, I was on a campus and one of our team members was helping walk a student through sightwords, doing flash sightword cards. So their education, they come all from different types of college education, some of them have their masters, some of them have four-year degrees, whether that's in education, communications, it kind of varies with them on what their background is. But there is a very long process to make sure that the people we are putting on campus are role models for your students.
That's what the connection is?
With what?
With your schools here?
No, like, you guys come in to raise funds, that I get, and then you're doing a character education thing. But I don't, I guess that's what, I don't see the connection between the two of them.
Yeah, so our, our founder, he actually, this all started with, he was, he was tutoring young students in sports lessons, mainly baseball. And he kept getting, being asked over and over, hey, would you like to buy this, this, would you like to order something out of the catalog or buy some wrapping paper, buy another tub of cookie dough? And he was like, and this is about 17 years ago, and he's like, there's got to be a better way to help schools raise funds versus just always selling something, and a lot of times it's food or some type of product. And so at that point is when he, he had come up, the fundraiser's not a new design, I mean, that's been going on for years, but he was like, could we, could we craft something that would be more than just a fundraiser? Because at the end of the day, who really wants another fundraiser? I mean, I mean, raise your hand if you like fundraising, like, nobody really likes fundraising, but it's a, it's a necessary evil, if you will, because schools need resources. And so PTOs and PTAs were actually never designed to have to fundraise. That was never the intent and the mission of those. But they've had to do it as a necessary means to help their students receive what they need, the filters, et cetera. So that's why we, that, that's how that got put together was, hey, let's make it a fun experience for students. The classroom interruption time is actually a very rare feedback piece that we hear because we have several options for schools to choose from, where it can literally take place during a lunch session or a recess or a special period, and so we're extremely flexible with how we carry that out.
Could it be done just as the fundraiser?
You mean without the character?
Yeah.
We haven't had schools do it without the character. We actually normally have it the other way, where schools don't talk about fundraising and our team's just onsite to provide the character enrichment.
Because, I mean, just in general, I think our, I think our, I think our K8 staff does a pretty bang-up job about character education, and we're continuing to grow our own curriculum around that.
So with PledgePro, that's how we've designed it. So with that PledgePro option where schools keep 90%,
Yeah.
That is just the fundraiser platform, so you're able to raise funds, kind of create your ownathon, and that is not one of our flagship programs that has the character. So yes, it can be done without the character, but not when you're looking at the option that the school chose with our team live onsite.
So, because it seems to me like the struggle, sorry, I, I thought that the grades of percentages come from the amount of money, the amount of work we were able to put into the fundraiser.
Yes.
You're saying there's also a factor about the amount of work we're able to put into character education?
No, 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 that's just a part of the fundraiser program with how we designed it.
If we didn't want to do that, would that be possible?
Yes.
Yeah, it certainly, I, we encourage you to at least take a look at, at the material, it's, it's all video-based, it's, it's excellent stuff, but it's unnecessary.
I get it, but we, I'm saying we have professional elementary educators.
Yes.
We're not trying to replace them.
I understand that, so that's what I'm just trying to figure out, if we're bringing you in to do fundraising, I'm trying to figure out at what point is it necessary to also have you come in and co-teach or support lessons?
Right, and it, it doesn't have to be.
Designed by somebody else, because we have curriculum people here working on a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, no, and you can't, with PledgePro, we can hide all the character off the site, we don't have to provide that resource. So that is an option, yes. If you took that piece away and you took away our team being onsite to help motivate and encourage and teach those lessons, whether that's, and our teaching, it's reemphasizing what's already been created and what's already onsite, we're not getting up and lecturing for 20 minutes. You are able to do that, and we have schools, again, it's a very customized approach, where we can adjust and change the program to fit a specific school's need. We have our 3,600 schools nationwide, no school looks the same or the community looks the same. So that's really what we're here for, is to help customize it to what your school needs, what your district needs, and what fits you guys best.
I think, I think part of the challenge for us is making sure that those conversations are taking place in a broad way with the community, about what it is that we do want. And I, I had a question that follows up on what Dave's question was, is it, is it possible to do this outside of the school day?
So the reason we do it during the school day is because we do want it to be 100% inclusive, and so we don't want students who aren't pledging financially or not participating to miss out on that fundraiser and on that community building. So we do have schools that run pledge pro programs outside of the school day. We've got one in Wakefield that runs, closest to here, that would be it. But with that, you're losing out on the aspect of that community, it's your entire school running, everyone's being a part of it, everyone's getting to celebrate the school reaching their goal. But yes, you can do fundraisers outside of school, but it looks a little different, and typically, when you change that structure, because it is a fundraiser and you're no longer having it during school, you'll see less come in. But if you're not worried about making a little less, then that's not, you know, it's choosing, hey, this is what we value right now and this is what we want versus, hey, this isn't what we want. Again, it's a school decision.
One of the other questions that has come up, and I, I'm not looking for an answer, but I'm just looking for sort of a flexibility to have a conversation and your thoughts about where that conversation would take place. There are kids who attend, we have students who, that kind of a pretty noisy, boisterous activity, and I had a chance to watch it at the Brez, it was very colorful, it was a lot of fun, is not really good for them. And how, what do we do to include those kids who can't participate at that level in that way? What alternatives are available to engage them and make them feel part of what we're doing?
So I can answer that with just the experience we've had, we want every school to be included. And what that looks like is very different. We also don't want to assume we know what that student needs because we don't know them as well as their teacher, their parents, their school community. So we have some schools that will do additional runs that are not as colorful or boisterous as you saw, where it's in the gym, the lights are on, the music's quieter, it's a shorter time period. We also have options where students who maybe aren't as mobile, we do something called Hero Fit, where it's in the classrooms and they do 10, you know, chest press or 10 jumping jacks with their arms only, so things that get them involved without making it a hurdle for them or uncomfortable for them. Our team wants to make sure everyone's included. It's an extreme example, but we had a school where there was one student in a wheelchair in the whole school, and she complained that the year before, when her mom pushed her around the track, that it was really bumpy because it was on grass. And so our team made her a track out of cardboard around the entire thing so that she could be pushed on a smoother surface. And so our heart is to serve the students and find a way that works for them, but we also don't want to come in and assume we know what that exact student population needs, but we will find a way to include everyone.
I think that that's a conversation that we need to have here to figure out if we continue at whatever level, how we can, how we can do that, how we can work more closely with you.
Absolutely.
What's your timeline? Like, if we were to do this again next, what was it, February? What's, when does it start?
So we typically fill our calendar year in advance, just so that we have time to prepare and make sure that it's good communication, which has been brought up that we need to work to communicate even better in this district. So it really depends on the service level with our full service program, there's more of a lead-up just because there's more logistics and details for us to figure out. We ask for around eight to 10 weeks minimum to turn around the program.
Eight to 10 weeks?
Minimum, from like, hey.
Before it ever starts.
Before it ever starts, just so that we can get your site set up, customize it, make sure we have everything you need to run it.
So if we were going to do this again next spring and got back to you by Halloween, we're good to go?
I can't guarantee that if you want our full team and those, those same dates with our full team, unless if it's an ongoing conversation of, hey, we're looking at this, we're trying to figure it out. But our calendar, we can only serve so many schools at a time.
Okay.
Please hear us say, we're, we're no pressure-based, like, if you guys say, this isn't a good fit for us right now at this time, we, we still want to be partners with you in some way, we'd love to serve in whatever capacity that is. So there's no pressure here, we, we have, thankfully, we have schools that even want dates that are in January, but we would love to find a way to earn your business again. We know we can't make everybody happy, but there's, we are flexible and there are ways, there's ways to work together, there's, there's, we've got ideas and other ways that we'd love to serve that don't even have to do with fundraising. But again, it's all about knowing each other, knowing what our heart is for your schools and you knowing hopefully what, what we mean and what our intentions are, so.
I, I think that what is clear is that there are a number of conversations that we really want to have that, that sort of interconnect. We want to make a, make sure that we understand what kind of fundraising we're asking the PTO to do, what's, what are those numbers, you know, does that burden need to be all on them, can we make some adjustments? And that's the finance, the policy is, you know, how do we, how do we engage students or do we engage students actively in fundraising? We need to have those conversations as well as the conversations about how do we make sure that every student can participate in a way in which is suited to them, is comfortable for them. So there's a number of conversations to have, I think we're, we're starting those conversations, and I think we'll have a much better idea of what, what it is the community feels most comfortable with.
And I will say, over the past few years, because I've worked with Amy Sullivan and also Tara at the Mullen, we found ways for those students who have sensory issues to be integrated. The first year, we were planning to do an outdoor fundraiser, but we found. The first year we were planning to do an outdoor fundraiser, but we found that we had some students with mobility issues where that wouldn't be a good fit. And so that's why we switched to doing the indoor glow run that you saw the other day or a couple of months ago. Um, and so we did this year have sensory runs. I believe we had sensory runs last year as well, uh, because the principals do such a great job of advocating for those students and talking about those needs. So those conversations are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, next item on the agenda is just a, a brief sort of update conversation. I have been involved with some community conversations about sustainability and recycling in the district, uh, both with students. We had a presentation here at, uh, Joint Ed probably about eight months ago, six months ago. Um, and one of the things that has come out of those conversations is a need on a district level to have sort of a, a place where we're talking about what it is we're doing, uh, with sustainability, what it is we're doing in recycling. There's lots of different projects that are happening into the schools, but there's really no sort of centralized conversation about that. Uh, so what, what, what has emerged, I think, and we're gonna be going forward with, and this is not, uh, this is not a, a thing that we're asking the school committee to take a vote on. This is just information is that we're proposing to set up a, um, district wide, what we're gonna call a sustainability committee. Um, and the purpose of the sustainability committee is gonna be to provide a forum for planning and implementation of site-based, uh, and district-wide sustainability practices, to work closely with each site to provide students and district staff with the opportunity to learn about and implement recycling and sustainable practices. And then also to identify and promote opportunities for students to understand principals of sustainable living and working. There are a lot of things that are going on at a lot of different schools, but we're not, we're not engaged in a full district-wide conversation where people sharing information, um, where new ideas are being brought in. So the thinking is that, uh, we would set up a committee that has representatives, some of whom are already, have already been working on this quite a, quite a while. That would be students and staff from each school, um, some people from central office and some people from the community, um, two people from the community who have strongly expressed an interest in being involved with this. Um, Amali Ettenborough, who, um, is, has been part of a lot of conversations. Um, and Sarah Hall, who's here tonight, who's been working with students at the high school and the middle, and the Mullen. Sarah? At the NOC. To set up, um, some of the recycling projects and some of the other sustainability projects. So, um, we will be sort of rolling this out. I've, I've, you know, head, you know, I've kind of circulated, uh, just a draft, a one-page draft. I have copies up here. Um, and I, I think, I'm really excited that we're finally doing this. So I don't know what else to say. Um, if anybody has any questions, any ideas about it, but, um, it, it will provide us, I think, with a, with a forum for really monitoring and promoting what we're trying to do.
This is the same work that our courier's been talking about?
Sarah has been working with our carbon, yes, yes.
Right.
It's gonna sort of, it's gonna be, rather than having it be a very decentralized effort that each school is kind of doing it on their own, we're gonna pull together a group that's gonna have an ongoing conversation. Or I think we'll do, I think we will be excited. I think it is exciting, yeah.
Who should people contact if they're interested?
Uh, they can contact me.
Okay.
Okay. Terrific.
Are there any plans to get, um, Black Earth or another composter back?
There are, there are, I think there've been ongoing conversations of.
Putting me back, they're still here.
Uh, someone told me they left because there was too much real trash thrown in with the food trash.
Yeah, let's, Sarah, you have some.
Would you, like, need a draft?
Yeah, would you? Sarah's been working with the group. Yeah?
So, yeah, so what you're referring to last year, the, um, the E Club students had set up composting at the high school and then they discovered that, uh, it wasn't being picked up because it wasn't being done properly and, um, that's, that's all been fixed. And really the, the whole impetus for this project came from the, um, the NHS E Club students. Um, they did an amazing presentation at, uh, at City Hall last summer that I had the opportunity to attend and, um, expressed interest in these projects and felt a lack of support. Uh, Mayor Holiday, you were at that meeting. Uh, they really impressed me and that's how I ended up getting involved in supporting them and attending meetings. And so now, um, Black Earth is, that's moving smoothly at the high school. We also just started it on Friday at NOC. They do it there and they're also picking up all the compost from the kitchens at all three schools. So there's been some really nice progress there already.
Again, um, we really need a place to continue to have these conversations and engage the community with it. So, um, I, I just wanted to inform you about it.
Is there a meeting set for?
We haven't set up the meeting yet, but I think, I, I'm hoping to get that set up within about two or three weeks. We have to identify people in each of the schools that are gonna participate. So, yeah, terrific, thank you. The school committee retreat, um, has been set for the 14th from nine to one. Um, we have Dorothy Presser coming from Mass Association of School Committees. We'll be talking about school committee roles, school committee, uh, she, I, she, I think she will update us on some of the, um, uh, uh, legislation that is changing, statutory changes that we need to be aware of. Um, and we're gonna be able to, I think, have a, a good conversation about our role and how we do the business of, of being a school committee. We'll also talk about goals. Uh, and again, that will be, that's set from nine to one, maybe shorter than that, or maybe some other things that we had to block out. We had to block out Dorothy's time because she is, she's working with.
In demand.
Highly in demand. Uh, and we really appreciated her, uh, coming up with a, a, a Saturday that she's willing to come in for the district. I think Steve and I are probably, maybe Donna too, are the only ones who've worked with her before. She's very knowledgeable. And I think she's been with MASK for more than Steve and I have been on the school committee.
Longtime, uh, vice chair out of Lynnfield Schools.
Yep. CPAC update.
Yes.
Turn it over to Sheila.
Peter is here as well. Peter, would you like to come up? This, this is Peter Twichell. He is the president of CPAC.
Sure, yeah, why don't you go down to the other end, cause there's two chairs there.
Okay. Do we hear a microphone?
No, you just, you're set? It's audible.
All right. So this is the, um, mid-year progress report for CPAC. They have been hard at work and I have been working with them as well. Um, we are working on rebranding CPAC. Um, and they have developed a new mission and vision and norms of engagement. Do you wanna talk about the norms of engagement or the new vision?
Sure, yeah. I would say that the thing that we're most interested in this year is trying to revitalize CPAC and, and engage more parents, especially the Breznerhand parents. As the issues facing young people seem to continue to expand, um, we think that a lot of the issues that the CPAC parents historically have dealt with are applicable to many, many other parents, whether your child has a 504, IEP or not. We're dealing with things like anxiety, which is a very common, uh, you know, issue for young people. You don't have to have the special education. So with that in mind, we're trying to engage more parents. And we're trying to, uh, change the name sort of informally in the community so that special ed isn't sort of the primary focus. We're trying to make it more apparent resource kind of thing with special education obviously is part of that. And, um, I think the good news, uh, the best news coming out of, of this year so far is that we are getting much better numbers. Um, this is my third year involved in CPAC and, you know, the, the sad thing historically is we've had really, really chronic dwindling numbers. I mean, we've had, we had some meetings in previous years where the presenters outnumbered the parents. And then we've really turned that around now and I think we're, we're getting better numbers. We're doing the outreach to the Breznerhand and we're trying to engage more parents overall. So I wanna, uh, hijack what you wanted to say, but that's, that's sort of our general focus for this year.
And we've been very appreciative to get a budget from the district. And with that budget, they hope to supply coffee and refreshments to parents as well as programming for these meetings to help with outreach. They have, we've set goals for the year and one of the goals is, as Peter was saying, to have liaisons in every building to help grow the, the meetings and have more participation. And we're also looking and brainstorming a pipeline of topics for workshops. So we'd love to hear from people and teachers if they've come in with any ideas they might have for that.
Two of the things, uh, that we're, we want to create a special award that comes specifically from CPAC, uh, because, you know, some of the issues that our young people face are not the type of things that are normally highlighted in, in an award. And so we're trying to really find ways to recognize, uh, teachers, staff and, and parent volunteers who are going the extra mile with, with our young people. And, um, then the other issue that I thought, you know, we're interested in seeing we can support more professional development related to special education issues. You know, our experience is that a lot of the teaching staff, you know, there are a lot of teachers with very highly specialized training and, and awareness of specialization issues and then other teachers with a lot less of that specialized training. We'd like to try to, in our own fundraising and outreach, try to find ways to support teachers in general across the board with more professional development.
Do you have any questions? Oh, this is wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate the update.
Yeah. Yeah, I, um, the, the sort of, um, the way the mission is morphing is really, I think, consistent with the district's greater emphasis on emotional wellness and, um, some of the issues that we're seeing across the broader population. So, so I think that this is a very timely, uh, conversation that you're having and, uh, partnership.
Interesting things. If you say one thing about CPAC, the thing to say is that what we have all identified as the obstacle is nobody thinks they're the type of person that should participate in CPAC. They picture students with much different set of, of issues and I'm one of those people. I didn't get engaged with CPAC till my son was in high school. Because I always thought it was sort of, you know, like, well, it must be like a lot of physical disabilities, must be kids going out of district, you know, extreme cases. And the, the thing is that CPAC is really for any parent who is encountering any kind of challenge with their young person, whether they have an IEP or 504 or not. You know, we all wanna be a part of the resource. And so if you talk about CPAC in the community, that's the thing to say.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter.
Yes, and Sheila, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
What is Peter's last name?
Peter, your last name, could you spell it for Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes. It's Twichell, T W I C H E L L.
Thank you.
Can we turn it over to Mrs. Superintendent?
Thank you. I have a few things to update you on. I wanted to let you know that, um, I went in front of the Swayze Foundation today with our proposal for next year with some exciting professional development ideas. And as I was listening to, um, Sheila, the two of you just present as you work on the professional development angle of things that you'd like to do. I'd love to be able to have some conversations with you about that because this proposal today was all about professional development and it was, um, well received. And we'll see if they are going to be able to accommodate us, um, in the proposal. So we should know soon. Their turnaround time is usually, uh, pretty quick with the Swayze Foundation. So that went well. Um, I wanted to tell you that we're continuing our learning walks. We just completed learning walks last week at the high school. And afterwards, um, after we do the learning walks, then the administrators who participate in those walks do a debrief and, and we try to calibrate our observations and we talk about things related to the SkillSpace work that we're doing. And one of the things that became evident after a year of our work with SkillSpace was that our conversation during the debrief had really shifted from what the teacher was doing to the conversations that we were having student, with students around their learning. And, um, it's a, it's a whole, it's a whole different conversation when you're approaching it that way. Uh, so that's really exciting. We all take the time to really talk to the students when we're in the classroom about what they're getting good at and, um, and they're getting better and better and better in articulating that. So that's exciting, making some progress in that area. I wanted to update, at the last school committee meeting, I had some questions about the student activity form. Um, I did go back and we updated the forms. We sent the new forms to all the schools. Two new.
Standardized.
It's standardized and it included all of the things that you asked for. I have a copy over here if anybody would like to see it. Um, the applications that were sent last time, I did ask them to redo. They've been resubmitted, they've been signed. I do have one question about one of them. We approved two of them and the other is not yet approved. Um, you had asked if Kyle could come to the next school committee meeting. I reached out to Kyle and he's on the schedule for, for the next school committee meeting. So he can talk to you about his proposal at that time. But when we did go back, um, to redo the applications, we found that there had been a student activity account that never got movement on the model UN, um, at the middle school. That had already been approved. But one of the advisors for it is no longer here. So I just went ahead and had them go ahead and fill out a new one that updated it and we'll move forward with that. You had also asked about, um, the membership of Girls Forward and, um, the advisor of Girls Forward was Ray. I reached out to her and she wrote a little synopsis of the work that they're doing. And, uh, but specifically one of the questions was, you know, do boys participate? And this year they have two boys, but they've had as many as five in membership of the work that they're doing with Girls Forward. So I also have that information if anybody's interested in, um, looking at that. And then lastly, I just want to give you a quick update on the, uh, searches that we have for the two administrative positions that are open in the district, the Director of People's Services and the Principal of the Breznerhand grades one to three. So in your packet, you saw the timeline, but for those that are in the community that didn't receive that, I will review that. Um, last week, we, we completed resume reviews, um, established committee guidelines with the, with the committees. Uh, the committees are in the process of setting interview dates and times and, uh, they have not yet invited their teams. They're still filtering through.
The advertisements have been placed.
Advertisements were placed.
For the two positions, the principal and.
Yes, advertisements, um, when did we open those? Maybe December? Yeah. It could've been the end of December or maybe beginning of January. So those applicant, that application process is closed at this point. Um, well, it's never really closed until you're hired, but, you know, we're, we're in the process. Um, the interview teams have been established and they represent, um, staff, administration, parents, um, on those committees. They have one lead on each committee that will facilitate the process, but we organize the process for them. So there's a consistent process, uh, for both search teams. Um, between this week and next week, those teams will identify the candidates that they'd like to. like to bring in for first round interviews. And they'll start that interview process and complete it over the next two weeks. And those committees are charged with making recommendations to send forward to central office administrators by the week of March 16th. And we're asking them to try to hone down to three, possibly four candidates that they'd like to send forward to, for second round. Those second round interviews will happen, and then Superintendent Gallagher will make a final decision, hopefully by the end of the month or very early April, about who will be looking to hire, hopefully, to fill those positions by July 1st for both of them. The start date for both of those positions would be July 1st. So the processes are active, and the committees are, are busy and very committed to having a really good process.
Good candidate pool?
Yeah, we did have a good candidate pool. We had about 45 applicants, I think, for the principal position and about 25 for the Director of Public Services.
Internals?
We had some internals, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
For both.
Other questions?
Do they ever come here, like the high school? I don't know, either the end.
I think we've introduced them to.
After, after.
But we don't interview candidates. We meet them. Shaun, you had a question?
I have a question. When Kyle comes on the 16th, can, can he be prepared to talk about the fundraising questions that we might have, or just to hear about? That's, I mean, that's a huge piece. So just like we heard tonight from the PTO, it'd be great to hear from Kyle about what teams are raising, why they're raising them, how would that?
I did, I talked to him about that. I think Nancy Lysek will also be here so that Nancy Lysek can talk about the bookkeeping ends of all of these accounts and how that works. And Kyle will be prepared to talk about the difference between, you know, the fundraising that happens for athletics, athletic fees, how the student activities accounts relate to athletics, and all of those kinds of things.
Is there someplace, should we funnel questions directly to him or take, who should, just so that he knows what, what some of the kind of questions we're going to want him to answer? How should we get, get those to you, get them to him?
Yeah, if you send those to me, I'll forward those to Kyle. That would be great.
Great.
Okay?
I'd like to introduce you to Superintendent Shaun Gallagher, for those of you who may not recognize him.
Wow.
It's your report, dude.
I told him I was going to have a pay cut for missing last.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is my, actually, my first intermittent day back here. Knee replacement surgery. So Steve calls, says I'm new berry port tough now, so I had to, you know, get that in.
It's not going up.
Well, I just have, I'm going to go through just the quick updates. Just on the census, we'll be just sending out information, you know, to families just regarding the census and the importance of that.
The 2020.
Yes.
The census, the national census.
National census. Just to give families information on that and the importance of, of that. The really, you know, in being home over the last, you know, in recovery here, just watching the news, and Mayor Holliday will also talk about this too, is this coronavirus and the changes every single day of what we're seeing nationwide and also for local, state health officials. For us, I'll be sending out information tonight when I get home to the families to give families update on the coronavirus and also, you know, being preventive, very similar to the flu, and also really recommending, especially for all of our students if they are experiencing cold, food-like symptoms, how important it is to stay home and get healthy, which is really, really important. For us, we're working closely with Department of Health, working with the Superintendent's Association, also the CDC. Kathy Ricchio is really our lead and liaison, getting all of us on the updated information that's coming forward. And a lot of, I think, families that have traveled or are coming back from travel are imposing that the self, you know, quarantine there, or staying home for the 14 days. I think that's, that's one big piece that's going though throughout the, both country and the Commonwealth. As you see, you know, if you're watching the news, there's a lot of districts that are recommending that. And I think families and, and students are really, you know, taking that in consideration. You know, for us, we're obviously going to support families that are going to stay home for the two weeks and, and not really penalize them with attendance. I know we all, we're talking about bonnet absenteeism, but I think through the, through the DESE and the commissioner, this is something that, you know, we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. So, you know, the most updated information we're responding to, and it, you know, continues to change. The other pieces, we're looking down the road, you know, for contingency plans on field trips and things of that nature, where I have the administration working with the staff and the students taking a look at that because, you know, down the road, you know, events like that could have an impact. So, and working with the mayor's office, and I think this is a citywide thing that we're all working towards. I know the mayor, you're going to have a forum coming up and.
Well, the first thing we're doing is, I've reached out to Mark Goldstein, the CEO at the hospital. And with their partnership with Beth Israel Now, there is a, you know, pretty renowned epidemiologist who is considered well-versed in the COVID-19 now that they're calling it that. So next week, week after, we've been able to pull together our school teams, our public safety, our health, and we're all coming together to meet at the hospital to sort of work out, you know, strategies, plans, because as things start to unfold, I mean, we had a situation in the schools where college students coming home and is in isolation for two weeks. That means family too. We had the same thing happen with another public safety member in, who came to me today and said, what do I do? I said, he stays home for two weeks. We have to start, you know, in making sure that people are doing the right thing and not, you okay over there, Steve?
Yeah. I'm fine.
Yeah. So, so we, we have information on the website. We're trying not to put too much information up at the recommendation of the CDC as well as the State Department of Public Health because things are changing in a heartbeat. So we don't want to, you know, get everybody locked into doing something and then, you know, you know, all the information is just, you know, pay attention. Pay attention to how you're feeling, your body, you know, if you're sick, you know, stay away from people, stay home, don't come to work, don't come to school, keep your kids home. You know, and that's, you know, and so we also are, have just, I think, bought out a whole round of new supplies for every city office, reviewing how we're cleaning, our cleaning procedures, that too, making sure wipes for every place that there's a counter. People who are voting tomorrow, make sure you use a hand sanitizer as you're, you know, touching all these surfaces and spaces too. So, I mean, I think we're trying to be as thoughtful and as proactive as we possibly can with the information we know to date.
I think that making sure that people have the most accurate, up-to-date information about protocols for dealing with this, how to recognize it, is really critical. I read a story, literally read a story yesterday, that 38% of the American population that was surveyed will not buy Corona beer because they think it's related to, God's honest truth, that they're not buying Corona beer because of the coronavirus. So.
That is not true. You may drink as much Corona beer as you want.
We're not advocating.
I don't know why you're talking to me.
We're not advocating.
I don't either.
For all the reasons to skip Corona beer.
But, but it's that, that level of, that's a significant.
But give it up for Mike.
So worst-case scenario, if we did have to quarantine the whole city and we had to, this is the worst-case scenario, but if we had, do we have laptops for our students?
Yeah, I think that's something that, you know, as, as we talk about contingency plans, it's something that, that we're talking about. I mean, my, you know, as superintendent, my number one priority is the safety and welfare of everybody. And then, you know, if that's the case of worst-case scenario, then the academic piece is something that would be secondary. But the first piece would be to make sure everyone's safe. But we're having some of those conversations right now, you know? And I think that that's the key, especially with us, is we need to be flexible, you know, throughout. You know, we may have policy and procedure that we think is working this week, and all of a sudden we have to revamp the whole thing next week. And having the ability to all work together and to be flexible as, you know, facultys, you know, families, students, and administration, I think is the key as we, as we move forward. And as I was saying, I was home, nothing better to do than watch the news in the election. So if you have any questions on that, feel free to ask. But, and I just saw from within a week the, the difference, you know, the, the changes that are happening. So as superintendent, as I'm coming back into the district, I just really believe we need to be flexible and constantly thinking of contingency plans throughout, you know, throughout the, the rest of the school year, you know? And then my last piece, and you were talking about expansion of dual enrollment. I won't spend a lot of time on this because I don't have a lot of information, but I know Angela May. But as part of Erin Hobbs's work with Southern University, she got certified as a dual enrollment teacher through that university and part of that science class that she's going to be running. So students will have the opportunity during the school day to also gain college credits. So this is another avenue for students. So we have like the night program that we have, and now Erin Hobbs going into next year will be able to offer that dual enrollment class for students that take that, that science and with the, with the GOMI connection.
Yeah, this is a really exciting class that they're going to, they're going to be building and launching a research station in the Merrimack River. And they're going to be studying elements of the Merrimack River. And, and they're partnering with GOMI in this project and also Southern New Hampshire University. So it's a, it's, it's stem alive. It's really great.
GOMI has, has created some of these stations in other places.
Yes, it's been part of the one in Maine.
Yes.
Yeah. There's one in Maine that they, that we've modeled this program in this course after, so.
And this really ties in, you know, the idea of place-based education, real-world education. So it's not, this class is going to be offered to all students, and it's not just, you know, like AP class. It's for students that really love science and want to get out in the field and work. So we're really excited about that. And thank Mr. Wolf and Erin Hobbs for really developing that program, so.
And a shout out to the NAF.
Oh, yes.
Have supported this financially, the whole building of the station, the research station.
And also the Endicott Dual enrollment, the funding too, so great points.
Was that GOMI, did you say?
G O M.
Gulf of Maine Institute.
Okay.
Of Maine Institute. All these necks.
I know, it's true.
They've been with us for so long.
I know.
I live in a world.
That's all I have.
Shaun, Shaun, how's the sociology class going so far?
Great. I think we have 22 students.
Nice, stuck in there last week. Really good. The kids are enthusiastic.
Very enthusiastic. We're, we're excited, and having 22 students sign up within a two-week period is, is pretty great. We have seniors along with some juniors that are in that class.
We have a local professor in there. I didn't realize.
Yeah.
I knew him, and I was like, oh, it's you! It's great to have a report resident, so.
Terrific.
These children have gone through this school.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Joint Ed today, Shaun?
Yep, Joint Ed today. Steve was here, Burke on before that as well, so he went to the CIP with them. They had a lot of questions. Talked a little bit about budget, but that's going to be more addressed at the next Joint Ed meeting. And, you know, Shaun went into, you know, MCAS and some of the other, you know, metrics we're not using to kind of see how we're measuring up to other districts and how we're going to, you know, look at how, what we're doing and what kind of success, you know, those, those things are yielding going forward. And I think they got a pretty good overview of that. And that's, you know, I just think, you know, with this new Joint Ed Committee, we've got some new people on there. I think it's great that they're asking, you know, these questions, and I think it's going to just improve the information going back and forth with policy council and the school committee. All good stuff.
Thank you. Finance?
Haven't met since last reported.
Okay.
Probably next week, I think we're going to have a meeting.
Policy?
We meet before the next meeting.
Were we going to try to meet here or, or in an upstairs room?
Agropolicy?
Yeah.
Just over there, so.
Oh, great. Great. That's fine.
I told the senior that if he kicks out, we'll take another room, but she said that a lot of people reserve that room at 5:30 on Mondays. We're pretty good to go.
Good. Superintendent, evaluation has not been yet. We're, some of the, some of those issues are being hammered out in policy, so. I would be happy to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
One second. Who goes in favor?